Hello. We have a good crack. I'm Ronnie Beal. Chairman Corbin is not with us tonight. He's out of town. There's a lot of folks in the room. We would like to keep the meeting in this room at all possible. We will be doing some recognitions of folks and after that, they'll probably be exiting. So if we could, if we could find, are there any jurors behind the double door tonight? Do you know? The most agenda tonight, we have a very extensive agenda. We have a long agenda. I'd ask for your patience to begin with tonight. We have two public hearings, one at 6:00 and one at 6:30. If there's any lapse of time between the two public hearings, we will proceed on with the business of the county commission. So we will have beginning at 6:00. What we're waiting on, we've had a little problem and he'll be here shortly. So we will certainly wait for his arrival. He said he'd be here in three or four minutes. So he said he had a little problem, so he'll be on shortly. Now, we have two sign up sheets. If you wish to speak to the public hearing in reference to the, we have two public hearings to the telecommunications power applications. If anybody here that's not signed up that would wish to sign up, if so, Officer Trammell will certainly take care of you and I have a sign up sheet here. Okay? We want everybody to have a chance to speak. The only thing we ask because of the crowd, if somebody's going to speak and say the same thing repetitively, we would ask that you would recognize that and let that person speak. But everyone's entitled to speak. That's what this meeting is all about. Second one, both of these for the telecommunications power. So if anybody is not signed up until we start the public hearing, you certainly are welcome to do sign up. Any questions about that? So we will wait just a few minutes before he comes in. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the office meeting of the Macon County, County Commission. We thank you for being here tonight. Once again, if you want to speak to the board on any subject besides the telecommunications power, Officer Trammell will help you with that. Once again, we know the room's crowded. We are going to do some special recognitions and I think after that, you won't have to stand in one place. So we ask for your patience in that. We would prefer to do that. It would probably take about an hour to set the other room up and so we would like to proceed on with everybody that we have here. So with that, we'll go through a few announcements. Commissioner Haynes.
How? No sir.
These are a few announcements that, that have been asked to make. One is considered the tag. Transportation Committee will be meeting in Silva. This is a crucial meeting. We won't get into how the point system works for our area. I do represent Macon County on that board. We will be putting ours forward. We have several streets in Franklin and of course, what we've really been pushing for is the area between McDonald's and the fire grounds where there's a wreck. I'll exaggerate over three minutes. So we continue to push that area for safety purposes for our citizens. That will be in Silva on August the 29th. If you want any more information about that, you will contact our county manager. We will be attending that meeting and we'll give you a report on how it goes. Also, tonight we have Mr. Martin Ramsey with us representing the Job Corps, the LBJ, Civilian Conservation Corps. It's the 50th anniversary of LBJ. If you don't know LBJ, it was the first Job Corps. And that anniversary will take place on the week of 8th through the 22nd. So if you're up there on Monday between 3:00 and 4:00 p.m., Tuesday between 10:00 and 11:00, Thursday 2:30 to 4:00, Friday 10:00 to 12:00, they're going to be doing a array of things. On Friday, they'll be recognizing past center directors. They'll be planting a tree for, for the, thank you to the county commission. The Job Corps is vital to our area in many ways, not only the help they provide to our communities, but also, just to be real frank, for the income they've done for Job Corps. And they've always been great supporters of our county and our projects. So please remember and put that on your agenda. There will be a public education forum by the League of Women Voters. That will be on, at Tartan Hall, 7:00 p.m., August the 20th. Tartan Hall, 7:00 p.m., August the 20th. In attendance will be several local educators and we'll be talking about the impact of the recently high budget that we're Macon County stands as far as teachers, the upcoming school year, that's very important to such. You'll put that, it don't say if they'll have food. No food. Bring your own food. But if you want to hear more about the educators, about what, about what the, where the education system is in our county, please attend. Also, Hollis Cactus Hospital and Eckerd Living Center will be presenting a free estate planning and healthcare directives open to the public. That's Friday, September the 12th, from 11:30 to 1:00. I was called Pamela Harris, and you may know Pamela if you're from Hollins. Called to ask you going to do that, so if you're going to drive up to Hollins, you will find that this is very knowledgeable folks. They got some folks coming in to help with estate planning in any way that you see fit. So please, so please remember that. Any other announcements I missed that someone in the audience might have? Okay? With that, I'd ask you to please stand. We observe a moment of silence, units in a moment of silence. Some county employees have lost some precious family members since we met last time. Remember these families in our moment of silence. I promote the silence. Commissioner Tate, please. Please, please, the flag of our country. Moment of silence, please. Commissioner Tate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic
We will now open the public hearing, the telecommunications power application from Cell Co. Partnership. Mr. Matt Mason will lead the discussion for the county and I believe Cell Co. has some representatives here, my credit.
That's me, sir.
They do? Just one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, if you'll take your packet that I was giving out, I think I handed it out earlier and laid it out for you. The property we're talking about, if you'll look here, it's in the middle of the page, Anthony Todd Mason property. And then I just provided you with this map for some of the neighbors that are, that are joining those pieces of property and maybe some of those are here want to speak and maybe associate where their property is with the proposed tower. If you'll flip the page, the Cell Co. Partnership is proposing, it's a 180-foot tower, but it's actually a 175-foot tower with a five-foot lightning rod. It would be a monopole type structure. And if you'll look here, there's a couple of things going on that you need to pay close attention to. The red dot, the red and black dot shows the proposed tower at elevation of 2289. The sort of pinkish area to the south of this is the ETJ limit line. So basically, we, we barely have authority to approve this tower because it's in the county's district by 200, 300 feet. The other issue we have is you see the pink line that sort of runs through by that says proposed tower elevation. That is a 2370-foot contour for the airport's conical zone, which I'll talk about in a The, the next sheet, if you'll turn over, is the site plan provided to our office that shows the location of the, of the cell phone tower in relation to Bud Perry Drive. Bud Perry Drive would be to the south. And you have a gravel drive that leads up to the leased area for the proposed tower. The, the next page is a very complicated page. This, this was done by W.K. Dixon for our heightened hazard ordinance for the airport, our airport hazard ordinance and relates to it. You will notice the red dot at the southern end of the page. That's the approximate location of the tower, which shows that it's in the conical zone for the airport. And you're saying, well, what does that mean? There are a couple of things that are required through the permitting process that, that the company hasn't obtained. They've guaranteed the bond, went through 9% of the proper steps. The, one of the biggest things that, that happens in proposed cell phone towers is the biggest question we get is it going to be lit or lighted? In this case, FFA would require, FAA, excuse me, would require that it be lit and marked to be distinguished in the airport's heading. The letter that I propose my recommendations upon, and I'm going to read it, it's, it's very short. It says, "The following are my reasons for recommending that the Nilo Cell Co. telecommunications tower's application was proposed to be located on Bud Perry Road. The telecommunications tower ordinance is very specific on certain requirements that this application has failed to accomplish. Section 154.13, Section E, states that no tower shall be of a type or height or placed in a location that FFA would require that the tower be lighted or painted." In parentheses, and I say see attached letter, I'll discuss it in a minute. The Section 154.13 E, number two, states that the applicant shall be required to certify that the proposed telecommunications tower is not required to be painted or eliminated by FFA rules or any regulations. Secondly, the proposed location of the tower is, is within the conical zone as defined in Macon County's airport hazard ordinance. Section four of that ordinance states that nothing in this ordinance shall be construed as prohibiting the construction or maintenance of any structure or the growth of any tree to a height up to 70 feet above the surface of land. And Section seven, number one, states that no material change shall be made in the use of the land and no structure or tree shall be erected on altered planet or otherwise established in any zone unless the permit had been applied for and granted. In conclusion, I have determined the proposed tower would be located in the conical zone of the airport hazard ordinance and the FFA would require the tower to be marked and lighted. Therefore, it's my recommendation to deny the proposed application.
Any questions remain?
What is the service? What is a proposed service area portion? Increase in cell phone service in that part of the county? Is there any state?
One of the requirements is a propagation study to show what the influence would be. And I have asked for them to, for Cell Co.'s, the representation of Berengos' maps tonight so we can discuss them. We had someone here, but they just weren't clear enough.
So this, this tower is for what purpose?
For Verizon lines.
And the county will have a guilty if approves this power and would put anything onto the county on the floor.
They have agreed that they would give us space at fair market value.
Because the reason you list your recommendation is that this application be denied?
Yes, relocated. And if you'll look on that, the conical map, you can see they're very close being outside that zone. They're also very close to being in the ETJ. So there's a couple issues going on, but here's your propagation. That's what it looks like. There you go. It appears that most of the service would extend down toward, down 28 and toward Iowa State.
Other, are the other locations that the cell hasn't looked at possible?
I don't know that this cell phone company looked at one of them.
Yes, I think with the packet, or at least some of the impressions, it might have been a top of the application.
We'll ask you questions. Any more questions for mayor? Okay, thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir. All right, we will ask Mr. George, I guess Siskel.
That's it.
Mr. Siskel, if you'll come forward. Mr. Siskel is representing Cell Co. Mr. Simp, you share the recommendation of our plan with Matt later. And welcome.
Thank you.
And you have the floor, sir.
Well, actually, to be honest, that, that part of it is, was news to me. I wasn't aware that the tower, and I don't believe my client actually was aware that the tower was within the conical zone. So I, honestly, I have not investigated that issue. I was, I was aware, my client believed that because the tower was under 200 feet, that any FAA determination letter was not necessary. So if this, because of its proximity to the airport, requires some adjustment to the, either the proposed cell tower site on the property or to another location, that's something we need to investigate. So I, what I would suggest is if, if that is in fact accurate, then I wish your client to deny the application for that reason, that I would request a continuance so that my client can investigate whether or not that's accurate and if there's, I don't have a reason without it, but I just don't know the answer to all of it. The only information I have is that because of the tower height, the FAA determination letter was not necessary.
Mr. Siskel, just a brief information. This time, we just want to make sure we get the minutes right, that we let these other folks speak and then, well, I'll ask support for formal action and then you can go back to report that to that client.
Well, I guess if you could indulge me and let me hear what the other speakers may have to say and have an opportunity to address that at the end, I'd be delighted.
No problem.
You had also asked about the acquisition issues and what other sites might be available. It may or may not be in the materials you have, but I have a copy of a letter from, certified or notarized, a letter from the company that did the site searching that I can provide. We only have one copy, I apologize for that.
Just on the side, they can tell what we do and everything.
Yes. And that meant their stated goal, which is to increase the LTE service area out towards Viola and in that direction. So if you don't mind, I can hand up a copy of that.
You need this map?
I don't need it.
You don't have family that's even with much of coffee? So, you'd like to, we'll let these other folks, you guys, and go back and post it on.
Thanks, sir.
Next, we have to speak on the Cell Co. telecommunications tower, Mr. James Banks. Mr. Banks, if you'd come forward, please, sir. Mr. Banks, if you would please, for the record, give your address.
2559 West Oak Murphy Road.
You're speaking to the one, this, this cell tower is located out toward 28.
That's right, on West Oak Murphy Road, it's pretty much my backyard.
Now, this is another one. That's the other, that's the second public hearing.
Oh, okay, you're on the wrong one.
It's all right. We'll, we'll put you on the right one. Okay, with that, Mr. Banks will be speaking at the next public hearing. And I'm sure, Ms. Vera, are you any kind of Mr. Banks?
Yeah.
I'll be out.
I think there's several of those names, because nobody knew which one was which.
Okay, well, it says up here, well, it don't send the location. I can understand it. No problem.
Our letter said six.
You'll have an opportunity to speak. The next one is, lives at 1199 Wendy Gap. I think they have chosen the right one to sign up. And I think the name is Casimir. Exactly. Mr. Cash, welcome.
Thank you. The other question I have is, I have no.
Would you give it, and your address is 1199?
The address that I own is 1199 Wendy Gap.
Yes, sir.
And my question is, where is the tower, for the, to me? I mean, Bud Perry Road runs right along my property. I have two properties down from the Baptist Church. And I don't have a map. I've never been given any information other than to come to the meeting. Where is the tower?
That map show you right there and make sure you understand exactly what we're talking about.
I know what this is. I am satisfied, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Don't let them. Don't let them. Glad you came.
Can I keep this?
Yeah, I don't think so, yes, sir. Thank you. Matt, if you would give this gentleman your information, if he should, since he is a resident, there are any more information. If you could give him your information, please. All right, next, to speak on the, this is a tower we'll call it, the retire on 28th. We have our airport authority chairman, Commander Spigot.
Mr. Chairman, welcome.
This reminded me the whole time, sure does. Mr. Chairman and members of the Macon County Board of Commissioners, I'm here on behalf of the Macon County Authority to go on record as being opposed to this tower being a place where it's proposed to be. Reason being, it's almost in the flatbed and since we've had our runway extended to 5,000 feet, our jet traffic has increased tremendously. And so, we're very concerned about, about this tower being built where they proposed to be. And I'm sure they probably need a tower somewhere here in Macon County to improve the communications, cell phones in Macon County. I know there's a lot of, a lot of dead areas in Macon County, but one of the things that we're concerned about, and we have talked with FAA, is the fact that we don't go on record as opposed to this and, and they go ahead and build it and FAA has not approved it, we could jeopardize our money with FAA. We've been very fortunate in the past, as all you commissioners know, to be able to get money to improve our airport and make it a credible airport for Macon County. And that's what our intentions are. So if, as far as us being opposed to the cell tower itself, if they'll get approval from FAA in black and white, I don't care if it builds halfway to heaven, you know, or rich, but we want to see approval from FAA that they'll put their stamp of approval on the site where this cell tower is. Mr. Siskel, you hear Matt read the FAA rules that he has upon him, but it being, so is that pretty much what you understood? That's it. Do you have a copy of that? One of the things that, that they haven't addressed as of today is the fact that we have applied for what we call AWAS, approach landing system, because of our jet traffic increase. And this, if we get this approval from FAA, get this system put in place, that's going to mean that our aircraft coming in to land can come in at a lower altitude. So that's going to make a big difference if we get this approval and we're working very hard to get it. So I want to read a letter here that we have written to, sent a copy of it to the FAA. And it's, "Macon County Airport Authority proposes the construction of a 180-foot high manpole cell tower off real Ben Affron. If constructed in its proposed location, a tower of this size could constitute an obstruction to descending aircraft who utilize the IFR landing system. The Macon County Airport is awaiting approval to implement a WAAS landing system, AWAS system. Using the AWAS system, aircraft typically approach the runway at a lower altitude. This proposed tower, which would effectively be some 300 feet higher in elevation than our runway, would constitute a distraction, if not a safety hazard, to descending aircraft. We also believe that the potential of a cell tower in this proposed location could jeopardize our opportunity to receive approval from the AWAS system and..." That's all, compliments. Any questions for Mr. Davis?
No, no, I would like to say, is here with the Verizon people, I know this area Verizon is the biggest used, all that we use. I would see some of the government airport regulars for safe reasons, for the light and recognition of human and animal rights. I would like to, but.
We can't do that just yet.
Not yet. You have to come out there.
Mr. Chairman, we're in. I miss a week and I want to give, you represent you, Siskel another time. Attention, come on back. Give your opinion, you want to enter that into the direction. This is a letter that was sent to Macon County Plan O' Mason today and we'll enter that into the minutes of the way.
This is, was written, had a phone conversation with Reggie Perry, Reggie and Pam Perry. Reggie's not able to be here due to health concerns and Dr. Lemon to stay in the house for another couple of weeks. And I'll read the letter and like, I think I've got a copy of you. Firstly, we would like to say that we are not against progress, nor are we against freedom to do as you please on your own property. The current concern we have for the cell tower in question is the impact on surrounding properties. Our biggest concern is the shared road, Bud Perry Road, which has been kept up in the past by people. Our biggest concern is the shared road, Bud Perry Road, which has been kept up in the past by people living on the road. If a cell tower is put on our road, the company that has the tower should be a major part of all the road maintenance if they're gonna be making a profit from its use. Our other concerns are property values and water runoff. Thanks to the county commissary for your time. That's Reggie and Pam Perry.
Well, this comes no surprise, what I heard, I appreciate you letting me have you come back up, convinced me that I'd like to request a continuance. I appreciate the commissioner's indulgence in granting that, because obviously my client has some work to do with Matt, and potentially with the FAA to an extent that, um, that those issues are applicable to the site. It may be that that's, this site is not workable, but I just don't have it, would not want to put my client in a position to have an odd, it could be workable.
We certainly encourage you, if this, for some reason that you see that this site is, is gonna be problematic into, that I think we're all gonna be in a question of behavior, that we certainly would like, so there's other areas around that neighborhood that, uh, that hope that you'll look at, and might be more feasible, uh, and, uh, somebody who deals with that way. Yeah, I don't think it's not, we don't need the service, the cell towers are, uh, very disturbing for a lot of men. And we understand that, that we need the service, and we're both, but we appreciate you asking. If this is not feasible, uh, Mr. Please be quick, and that are...
Yeah, and I, I, I will speak for my client, and I, I don't work with my client, I'm an outside attorney, but I will speak to them, knowing that they're, they're interested in increasing cell coverage in the area for any number of reasons, including, uh, emergency services and just general help of use, so I, I, I don't expect them to... If this doesn't work, but I'm sure that since they spent time on this site, they'd like to figure out a way to make it work as possible. So I, again, I was a question.
I do think it's appropriate to, at your request, on their application, hopefully be able to, um, then if you can look at the situation, or continuing this public hearing, I would recommend against that, what I think we would probably do is just call an addition, or a new public hearing on any revised, uh, plate, I think.
I'm thank the motion, we've been waiting about three years for this motion, uh, to approve the cell tower as presented, will be denied, and so that gives you an opportunity to go back and rework whatever you need to do.
Thank you.
Thank you for considering.
You coming back from Verizon, would be, I know a place that's there, and there's one tower like old sixty-four here. It was already up, and we discussed up here, US sale going. Had to put up and see and make it, make contracts, and we've devised a couple of areas, a lot of kids come through that, and there's another place.
Well, I'll certainly encourage my client to continue to work on this area.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, thank you, your time.
With no other comment, uh, allow this public hearing close. We will now entertain a motion as to the public hearing, after the evidence is presented, Mr. Brigg.
Okay, I recommend, uh, our recommendations that were stated by Mr. Ray Perry and by Karen Cherry, to deny this, uh, cell phone tower, if it were his, and all the letters, and...
You have a second?
Second.
Much we made a second, that this cell tower application is presumed to be denied by this board in further discussion. All of the members say aye?
Aye.
All of the publics, most of you have a... We will now open a second public hearing, which is scheduled for six-thirty, we're almost on time. This is from, uh, telecommunications tower application of Tower Engineering Professional. This is the, uh, application that's designed and is presumed to go out on, uh, old sixty-four on the Murphy Road. Uh, so, uh, Mr. Mason, if you're tired of speaking, get this out.
Also have Mr. Justin Cosgrove, the orange shirt, he's gonna be representing America.
This place just makes people feel happy with us. Thank y'all for coming. If you folks who are standing would like to have a seat, on the vacant area, please do so.
Get copies for everybody.
In this public hearing, is now the session...
Mr. Mason? Thank you, Chairman. I made the same detailed maps, matched the similar ones to hopefully limit some confusion. The property in purple is Brian, Mr. Brian Borchard's property, where the proposed tower is gonna be located. And then your neighboring property surrounding that, it also shows that. The next page shows the approximate location of the tower as presented.
Hold on just a second.
Okay. This is on, uh, West Old Murphy Road? You know, you see the pond right across the road?
Yes.
That's that really nice house, the pond, you're going up to...
Oh, oh, we're way on that.
Yeah, you're going, up before you start up the mountain. The actual physical address would be... Twenty-five thirty-three, West Old Murphy Road. The, uh, if you flip the page of the first large map, that shows the proposed location of the cell phone tower. The difference here is American Towers is, is doesn't have an agreement or contract at this point with a provider. There's just sort of the middle plan for building cell phone towers.
Is that mainly the middle plan, the larger power isn't included?
As of right now, and I'm getting ready to discuss that. The, uh, the next page is your, uh, basic site plan in relation to the Wyman's property, uh, Mr. Banks's property. You're gonna probably hear from both of them, and maybe some other folks. Uh, but you can see that it goes up past Mr. Borchard's house, the gravel road to a lease area that's a monopole design, same height, same style as the other one, be a hundred-and-eighty feet, with five feet of that being a lightning rod. Should be actually a hundred-seventy-five-foot tower according to our ordinance. The, uh, as I said earlier, there's a lot of things that you have to look at with the cell phone towers. You've got to look at bonds, applications, you know, give out the property notices, and all that's been met. The, uh, the only thing that we've not had, that's not been met in the ordinance, is section one fifty-four oh seven, that states that a propagation study with similar doc, or similar documentation showed in the search areas for the proposed tower antenna must be submitted to our office. And I'll read you my recommendation again as I did before, this one's a little shorter. The following is my reason for recommending the denial of the American Towers application, which is presumed to be located on West Old Murphy Road. Section one fifty-four oh seven, number three, states the propagation study, or similar documentation showed in the search areas for the proposed tower's antenna must be submitted to the administrator. That's the only piece of evidence that they didn't present in the application. The, uh, conclusion, in conclusion, I determine the proposed tower should not be constructed until the proper propagation study has been submitted and reviewed in our office, in order to justify the need for the tower height and the telecommunications service. Therefore, at this time, it must be my recommendation to deny the proposed application. Any questions?
Any questions, Mr. Mason?
You said that has to be a light tower, also?
This one would be unlit. It would be just like our standard cell phone towers that we have currently in the county.
The total height again, when you're...
It's actually a hundred-and-eighty feet. Um, five feet of that is a lightning rod, so by our ordinance, it's a hundred-and-seventy-five-foot tower. Everybody builds the maximum height they want to, which is a hundred-and-seventy-five.
Any more questions, Mr. Mason, if you can, welcome.
Before that one's gone inside the block, that's just real on the other side of the mountain, that's the valley, a little there.
Yeah. Probably a couple, two and a half miles, by, by road, so maybe two miles by there.
Now, when you said everything gets submitted, that they did contact the neighbors to join property owner?
We did.
And we have several of those few folks here to speak. So, it don't matter what the property owners, in our ordinance, it don't matter what they, how they come back, if they, if they're not be there, they just have to be notified, correct?
That's legally, as far as the auditors, we have to notify them to give them a means of a way to express their opinion.
Like the order that.
And then to result in that's meetings, whether, I mean, can it be built? Probably. Question four, should it be built?
I'm sure. Any questions for me? We do have several speakers to speak to this, and, uh... We will ask, uh... Cosgrove, is that, is that Cosgrove, you'll be up in just a minute. So we'll ask, uh, Mr. Banks, and, uh, James and Vera, the Bankses, if they'll come forward. Mr. Banks, welcome. By the map, we see that your, that your property, uh, is joining, uh, very close to where the proposed cell tower is to be located. So you have...
On this map, it looks like it's pretty good distance away. But in reality, it's probably a hundred-and-fifty, less than a hundred-and-fifty yards from your property line from your... From my house. And it's even closer to the other residents up there. And I called the people today that had the joining property around there. And the only people I know that got a letter, registered letter with myself, and, uh... Rogers. The Aunt Tillies are in Florida, his wife has cancer, she's down there taking treatment. The other lady couldn't, she didn't know anything about it, she couldn't be here because her kids were being enrolled at school. Macon, Georgia. Uh, the Woods, they said they wasn't notified. But the main concern I have, is what's coming to my property around here. I've already took a beating on it because of the bank, I bought it, I went and sat the highest, I tried as I could get half of my pay. If this passes, I don't think it's really gonna hurt my investment, my property. And there's no reason, if it's beneficial to everybody, why can't it? They own all the way to the top of the mountain, I mean, if it's that beneficial, put it up on top of the mountain, don't put it in my backyard. And plus, you know, everything I've read about it, only two studies, long-term studies, one in Israel, one in Sweden, that it has adverse health effects. You got a twenty percent higher risk of getting dementia. It's a fifteen percent increase on organ cancer, it's called infertility, and, uh, this don't sound good to me. And it increases the closer you are to the star. If you're a mile away from it, you don't have such bad effect, but it kind of breaks up. But if you're within a three, four-hundred yard range there, it almost triples. So, it's great meaning, thanks. I also got a letter here, which I don't know if it means anything, but I got it. You got it? This is from the lady, she said she didn't get any notice.
It'll be right in her, almost yard.
She's got a balcony, got a real nice home, this thing's gonna be within fifty yards of her, where a balcony is. And here's a list of all the people that are on this, uh, eighty-four twenty-four repeater club, are you familiar with that? It's a ham radio club, they're based up in Sandin Indian, they provide, uh, they do rescue on Appalachian Trail, where there is no radio signal and stuff, they can get somebody in there where they have the signal. And it's signed by about thirty or forty of them. They're afraid that it'll affect their, their, what they're doing.
Anything to add, Mr. Banks?
We don't want it.
Before you sit down, let's make, Mr. Matt, when the notice was sent out to the, the joining property owner, to those in the neighborhood, do we have a verification that they received notification?
Do you mind presenting those?
Oh, I'll say, and I'm sorry to interrupt, we live right across from the tower's, and we never receive the letter either. Melzer, we bought Dr. Thompson, Dr. Thompson's home.
James? James Belter?
That would be James. I don't really look like a James.
Have you talked to him last week or something?
Um, six weeks, I guess so. Well, I knew he was very angry and, and very upset.
Oh, I spent many days with him, so... I do have verification, certified mail by Mr. Woods. Richard Woods, remember? I have one, are they telling me any of that? Sorry.
What about Lila Stewart?
I've got one for Dorothy Wyman's. Paul Thompson. Lila Stewart was marked deceased. And then we have a copy of where it was actually sent back, returned to Senator David Deppen, David Decease. Jeanette Malfra, Lake Shore Drive, Chicago. Richard Woods, Ocala, Florida. Richard Wood Senior, Ocala, Florida. William Dale Nichols, Gastonia, North Carolina. And Mr. Banks. And then also William Nichols.
What about Aunt Tillies?
There was two that were not a part of this that I received today, and that was... Aunt Tillies was one of them.
Aunt Tillies came back from three thirty today.
And they, that was when you sent it Friday, was it Woods and the others?
I believe, for the final two, he was...
Thank you.
I just agree with you.
We'll now move to, uh, Julia Moody, Brigg. Who's Brigg? General comments?
Who you? I didn't put my name on the sheet, but I guess I can speak.
You'll have a copy, you just, well, it's just if it fits your purse.
She's not in the house.
She's not in the house? All right, we'll move on to James C., looks like the Remberg?
Reber.
Reber. Reber, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and, uh, commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is adjacent to the proposed site, so this is a big, a family thing. I am an electrical engineer, I have bachelor's electrical engineering and master's electrical engineering at Georgia Tech, and a registered professional engineer in the state of Georgia. I have thirty-three years' experience in designing RF, uh, radio frequency systems and circuits. My family, as I said, owns the property at two-three-eight-one West Old Murphy Road, the Wyman's, uh, it is...
And Dorothy?
Yes, sir, that is my mother-in-law, my wife's mother, and, uh... It is the property most affected in our, to our understanding, by the proposed, uh, tower. And I will stipulate that we are in favor of improving telecommunications capabilities in that part of this county, including cell coverage. But we have extreme concerns about this... But we have extreme concerns about this tower as proposed as to its exact sighting, location, its height, and its appearance. I have reviewed your telecommunications ordinance and the, uh, application for Mr. Mason in detail. Uh, we come to that house many times a year and stay for days or weeks, and its primary value to us, I have to say, is sitting on that porch that the gentleman referred to, looking at beautiful mountains. And I note that the primary purpose of your ordinance, as stated in the ordinance and also the state law that refers to, has to do with the beauty of the North Carolina mountains and protecting them. And it's in, in the ordinance and apparently a primary purpose. So, uh, we are concerned that the proposed tower will be right in our primary view, looking across this valley. And it's a pristine valley, a tree, valley floor, mountains, there are no other towers there, no other man-made large things in view. So I would like to see the details as to exactly why that is the precise tower site necessary for this purpose. I don't know why it couldn't be located 200, 300 feet up the mountain, the, from the same lease or, that piece of property goes all the way to the ridge. Uh, it could even be sighted on the ridge, for that matter, but it certainly would not down in the, near the valley floor where it is proposed, go up the mountain some, so that it's not in anyone's primary view, and especially ours, I would like to see that. Uh, the height proposed in the application is 175 feet. Well, that is simply the maximum height that you are allowed under your ordinance to approve, and it was not based upon any, as noted, propagation study provided in the, in the, uh, proposal. Uh, as an RF engineer, I would like to see and review as part of the public record, uh, the, the exact detailed propagation studies that justify a tower of a specific height for specific telecommunications, uh, purpose, to provide certain coverage of exactly what kinds of transmitters and receivers. I would expect to see that in 20-foot increments on down to show, so that you then, the Board of Commissioners, would be empowered to approve, uh, a tower that is no higher than is required to meet a very specific purpose. Uh, not just a request to build the tallest that the ordinance, uh, would allow. Uh, and finally, your ordinance clearly gives you the power to require a tower to be camouflaged, which by the way, is standard in any tower these days, put in a national forest, a park, a wooded or natural area, just in Yellowstone. Certainly seen, I've been in North Georgia in these similar areas, the towers are camouflaged. So I would ask that you require that any tower that might be approved in that area be camouflaged as a coniferous tree, uh, the way that, uh, is generally done in this industry, and certainly needed in that, that area. Right now, what is proposed is a start-grade tower bristling with antennas on the top of it, stuck out in this, in this beautiful area. So in, in summary, sir, uh, the three things, we'd like to see the analysis as to why it's gotta be sighted exactly there, right in our view of the mountain, why it couldn't be put up the mountain even several hundred feet. Could be that, it could be shorter, about the elevation gain, uh, by the way, if they did that. Would like to see detailed propagation studies in 20-foot increments, showing the coverage area proposed for specific use, so that again, you, you would be approving only a height that is appropriate to given use and no higher. And we would ask that you, the board, direct that any resulting tower you approve be thoroughly camouflaged, uh, as is standard in that industry, as is needed in a, in a natural forested area. I appreciate your willingness to speak.
It's in any place, and be very good together. Thank you for appearing.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Mr. Richard, uh, Lucian. Richard's still here?
Yeah, some of those.
Some of those, it's okay. We'll move on, the next, Mr. Les Slender. Mr. Slender.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I am a half mile from the tower location, and I support cell towers. But I ask that the commission change the ordinance so that everybody who wants to build on that tower can go on that. A tower is, Verizon has a tower on Orange Preachers Way, that's four miles from my house. And, uh, I have AT&amp;T service. If that Verizon tower allowed other people to build on it, then I would have service. But Verizon, I'm told, doesn't allow anybody on their towers. And I have a handout for you. That Jackson County requires anybody who builds a tower to, uh... Allow anybody to have that tower and pay a rent for that tower. And if that was the case, I would have service, and my neighbors would have service. And, uh, I think you should require, similar to Jackson County and other counties, that you authorize a tower that be required that anybody can be on that tower. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slender. Next, we have Mr. Drew Solzby. Mr. Solzby, still with us? Okay? Mr. Solzby, we thank you. All right, uh, Mr. Cosgrove, you have the floor, sir. Mr. Cosgrove is here tonight, uh, I guess you're representing, uh, tower engineering?
That's correct. My name's Justin Cosgrove, I'm a registered engineer in North Carolina. I'm, I'm with Tower Engineering Professionals, uh, representing our client, American Towers. Here tonight, uh, to address any concerns, as well as discussing the engineering issues. Uh, with Mr. Mason's recommendation for denial, I would also like to request a continuance, uh, so that my client can, uh, provide the propagation studies, which was the only item that was missing from our submittal. To elaborate on the propagation studies that were requested, uh, that's a standard practice we, we, we do quite often. Uh, being that the carrier isn't confirmed, you can't do a propagation study. Uh, so, I, I have confirmed that both Verizon and T-Mobile are interested in the subject site, along with AT&amp;T. They've been...
You have confirmation of that, or they just sent you a mail?
I have that and an email from my client.
Interested or...
They, they've been presented the exact tower location, and have shown strong interest in the site. So going through the ordinance with the submittal process, the propagation study was the only item we did not submit. I'd like to request time to, uh, have that prepared and brought before you, uh, once the client has confirmed, has confirmed the carrier.
Mr. Cosgrove, you think we possibly, if your, uh, Mr. Remberg's, uh, proposal about moving up, up the ridge, maybe doing it in 20-foot increments to see what coverage, does that make perfect, good sense to you?
Sure, I know, um, on this site, we, we investigated three locations on this parcel. I'm not sure if any were up the ridge or not, I do know there were three places that were looked at. Uh, should we can surely look at, uh, the parcel as an entirety and see what would be sufficient for the tower? Also, to address the, the notification to property owners, I've heard across the street where the owners personally signed receipt for the notification letter. Uh, there were also 52, uh, property owners within the radius that were notified, uh, first-class mail. So we, we handled that process meticulously, and, uh, we have receipt, uh, receipts from all 11 adjacent property owners with their signatures. So at this time, I'd like to request a continuance, so we can provide the propagation study and also, uh, confirm the carrier, if that, if that's what is requested.
We do have one more speaker, Ms. Melzer is... And after she speaks, since there's no one else to speak, we'll close the club if carrying will last for most, and then, and they pretty much in the same way, I think. For, maybe we need to give them an ample time to, to come back before the bill. So she didn't speak, and we question? No, we'll go ahead and question, we'll go ahead and ask. One thing no one asked you this year, um... Is your class up there will use the same color, the same...
The same pole?
Yeah, use the very same tower as the other class, you tell that, even over the AT&amp;T.
The tower, um, is gonna be manufactured by Nilo Towers, I have the tower design drawings and the, uh, structural drawings as well.
So all will be used with the same tower? Or will be pretty good?
They would co-locate on the exact tower. Uh, we showed three, uh, proposed co-location intended arrays, so possibly three carriers on the same tower.
Okay. I do have a question about moving it up, I'm willing to go along, see what you got. I'm gonna tell you something, I'm really strongly want to have a cell phone company, say, the other thing with it was, uh, that I was, uh, concerned about right there, hearing what our people, those folks said about camouflage and all that thing. Is that something that's, uh, that's pretty sometimes...
Yes, sir, uh, the specific tower he's referring to is stealth tower, so it has simulated pine tree branches, uh, typically, uh, 60 feet down, the branch out. We have, have designed, uh, those types of towers. So, um, a monopole i- is standard, um, and the ordinance did not say that you could not provide a monopole, uh, but we have designed stealth monopoles before, um... As, as a form of camouflage.
To require camouflage, we need to change the ordinance.
You actually have the provision in ordinance to, to, can you just improve it with, uh, what camouflage is required?
I think it ought to be across the board fair. I think it'll be a standard thing for good, I don't like to pick and choose. But the question I have, well, they're standing there, and this ordinance was, was here way before day, but we go. In that area, we've got, what, now four towers? If this was true?
This would be the fourth.
The fourth one up in that valley, well, standing in Indian. Out in Redwood. How do we choose these sites? I mean, yeah, I'm for cell tower towers too, I'd love to have one in my backyard on Burnet Town.
I'm not an attorney, I have no financial interest.
I want randomly to prove these things if they're valid and hack me to them, I mean, I'm not a tech go whiz, but... If we, at some point, we've got to, do we have a study or anything, the air, what type of service is best for Macon County as far as coverage goes? Send three, four towers in one general area is a little bit...
Most of your propagation studies take into consideration that?
So, so a propagation study will show various colors, it almost looks like a heat map, uh, green being good service, red being one bar, white being no service. So that area is pulled, um, in a radius around the site and shows the intent regarding other towers, uh, to connect certain dead spots and not show the overlapping.
Use of it's your studies, will it reflect that?
It will, it will show an overview, um, our RF engineer will put it together, it'll show an overview of the surrounding service areas, and then show the intent behind the tower to fill gaps in service areas.
With some hours ahead, is that pretty close for cell towers?
I'm not aware of a, a specific mile or a half, um, distance being done.
I want to Fred and White, when you're talking about.
Side of the whole side of, side of that. Slatter slables, probably, just one across the road and... My, my parents' house, huh?
Well, you have to prove that through memory report.
I didn't wanna break across.
But that's not ever having to think, though, that, I mean, there's no seizure, there's no...
There's no, there's no, no tower, that, that tower's up, and that is not...
Would it be wise to have a county-wide study of the weakest areas of service town? And work to provide coverage for the, I mean, apparently cell towers are gonna be a continuing thing, though we don't specifically saddleize, but I think, or do we have that statement, I'm not aware?
We don't have a county-wide, and that might be something that, I mean, we could, we could find...
Paul, you did a little indication, we were at a, and Ryan Sherby is here, and he can verify this number if I say it wrong. AT&amp;T came to Jackson County, uh, they want to put cell towers, where AT&amp;T would cover just Jackson County. A hundred, how many towers are you gonna take, Ryan, do you remember?
I don't.
It's over well over a hundred towers, just for the county. So, a lot of it is photography, what we need?
A lot of it's photography, and a lot of it is, um, the property owner addressing, you know, contacting these carriers, saying, I'm interested in having the tower.
So basically, we use right now the two locations, if I call him up and say, I want cell towers.
They research it, look at, see if it's profitable for them, plus it's a benefit for the community.
Mr. Cosgrove, on this, I think, things I was encouraging, look up the hill, if you're, these, these homeowners, what they say, and, and, and a list or, uh, brochures is who you're dealing with, I think. If you have adequate area there, uh, if they're within 50 yards of this house, and you hear the argument, sure, I think as far as I'm concerned, it's gonna be very hard to approve, we need to vote in favor, if you come back with, with the studies, if it's close to these houses. These folks are highly invested in Macon County on a tax rate, so, uh, I would encourage you to look up.
We'd be glad to, uh, look at other areas of property, I wouldn't know the current location, we're meeting all set-back requirements, um, I definitely understand the concern, um, but like I said, the current location that falls in is on the parent parcel, and we're meeting all ordinance requirements. We'd be glad to look further up the hill, if that's what's needed.
Thank you so much. We got, you have anybody, any questions, if we have one. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for your time.
Where are you from?
I'm from Raleigh, North Carolina.
We have one more speaker. Ms. Spencer, I, uh, apparently you have purchased this property recently, first of all, uh, welcome to Macon County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This isn't exactly, I would want to, um, my first...
That's why you're giving, no matter if you're going six weeks, six days, or six years.
Sounds good.
As a taxpayer, you certainly have the right to be here to be and vote your opinion, you have...
Well, there's really nothing more I can say, all I would be doing is reiterating whatever body else said. You know, we had two children, I'm all for cell phones, but, you know, Dr. Thompson and all these other people have come to this area, and they worked really hard to work and build nice places to live. And I don't want to go out my driveway and see this monstrosity. Now, I have awesome coverage, I don't have cell phone problems where I live, and if I did, I have a house phone. You know, it's kind of a common sense thing, if I needed it, I have it, but we don't need it. And the, the, I think what that grites us is, we work really hard and we live there. The gentleman that's putting this on his property doesn't live here. He, he doesn't, he, he comes on, yeah, I've never seen him, I've been around for two months, and I'm not meeting once. And, you know, so it's financial gain for him to have it on his property, it hurts us, it hurts our land value, but what does it matter to him? He doesn't live here. And so that's what's a little frustrating, you know, if we need, so what is it, what if, what if you, or you, I'm excited, I want, you know, just to make some extra money, I'm gonna put a tower in my backyard. Well, how do you regulate that? How do you at some point go, you know, this is a little bit, you know, it's getting over, overdone, and we need to kind of rein it in some? Again, I'm for cell, I have cell towers, I, I have children that I need to even touch with, but there has to be some guidelines. And, you know, if somebody has 50 acres, wants to stick it in the middle of their 50 acres where it doesn't affect everybody else, and their land value, and you don't have to see it, every time you drive away, more power to them. But when you live on smaller parcels, well, it affects, you know, if I go and I decide to put my car on blocks, and I decide to take a white trash right there in the middle of nice houses, my neighbors aren't gonna like me too much. Because it affects their land value, and it's the same with you, facts about, you know, cancer, or I can, you know, I can come up with different things, but the bottom line is, we work really, really hard to, to have nice things, to live in nice areas for our children. And part of the beauty of North Carolina in this area is, and this is what everybody comes here for, is those natural resources, the natural, like the trails, the hiking, you know, not all of the, the towers and everything. So, that's really, I guess, what I'm, what I'm appealing to, is y'all as homeowners and, and, and being from this area, that's really all I have to say.
Any questions? You have, what carrier do you have for your cell phone?
I have Verizon.
Yeah, what service, you said you had good cell service?
I mean...
Cars, I mean...
Well, I mean, if I'm in a, in the dungeon in my house, you know, by the brick wall... Well, I mean, if I'm in the dungeon in my house, you know, by the brick wall, I might have one. But if I'm upstairs, I'm downstairs, I have four, I have all my bars.
What type?
Well, you have good service.
I have 3G, 3 bars.
See, I don't even have 3G. I don't have fancy phones. I have a mom phone, so. I don't even have fancy phones.
Mr. Cosgrove, you have something to add?
Ray Bird.
Same thing.
We have Verizon and the Wymanis property there, and wicked coverage. It's not four bars, but we, I'm not aware of us being unable to make Verizon cell phone calls, internet, whatever, from that house.
My son, it's not enabled to.
Any more questions from this panel? We need to move on.
Are we good? I'm good.
Thank you so much for being here. I appreciate it. Thank you all. And we need to deal with, Mr. Cosgrove, you have any name?
With the statement regarding neighboring property values, we would be willing to complete a study to show cell phone towers, cell phone towers' effect on neighboring properties, if that would be, if that's required. I'd just like to...
If it's not required, it might be the right thing to do.
That'd be fine, standard practice for us. I'd like to request a continuance with Matt's recommendation.
We will, we will handle it, except for board, with both public hearings seeking. Thank you.
Can I say one quick thing? The guy that wants this installed has a road built along the top of it. I don't see that it's beneficial to start with, when we already got four of them. I've got great internet service.
And I think, Mr. Cosgrove, I think you agree, these will be a little bit different.
I could also add that I can ensure our client, American Tower, has done their due diligence on this site, and they wouldn't propose a site that wouldn't be beneficial to the county. I wouldn't want to speak directly on that. I'd like to request a continuance.
Any more comments? Thank you. Before we close, any more comments? This is, got one.
We live in that area about two miles farther, out more at Port Standing Indian, in a valley, and we do not receive cell phone service, so it would be greatly beneficial to several people in that area if we could get a tower closer to us.
Y'all can call her.
Isn't there a tower up there? Have enough on it? I don't know if it has nothing on it. I don't have nothing.
It's regular.
It's regular. So, we're gonna close, no more comment? Our proceeding is now closed. The board, you've heard the regulation, national plan, you've heard the citizens of the county speak to the issue. Great people. Well, they've done fairly, come back to the board, but presentation, if we deny it, I mean... But he denied it, he must start the process. He had to make the application and all that stuff. No, he can make a, help his application. But as far as this public hearing tonight, we're gonna deny any movement forward until he meets the criteria, that's all we're doing here. Based on that, some recommendation, these county managers, what's the pain to do? I may want to... Do we have a second? Much of the ladies said that with the information provided, that the application as presented by tower engineering be denied at this time, application to be remained open, and the pieces of software will be planned, or any further steps. Only thing I got to say about everybody stating their opinions, that it's a lot of weight to me only, if I'm staying for, I've lost people, seeing always, try to protect their safety, and I'm okay with it, don't listen to them. Any further discussion? All in favor of the votes, say aye. Any opposed? If the votes are unanimous, thank y'all. Thank y'all for coming, everybody. All right, folks, we need to move on. I can't finish this. The next time...